Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see so many people here tonight. It's especially nice to see so many of our youth students here with us tonight. A lot to celebrate. So before we get on to the celebrations, if you would stand with me, please, for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, universal, and just as a whole.
And our Kids in Hope pledge, treasure hunter pledge?
As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success.
Thank you. You may be seated. Mr. Superintendent, I will turn it over to you for special orders of business.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening to the board and to everyone out there. We're going to add, it's not on the agenda, but I'd like to do a point of privilege and add and ask for Mr. Armstead if he'd come up to the podium here and Elise Bailey from the Boys and Girls Club. Elise is the 2021 Youth of the Year for St. Lucie County. She's a junior at Centennial High School, so we have another year with her. And then she's not sure yet, she's got some time to think about where she's going to go on to college, possibly FSU or Indian River State where she aspires to be a public defense attorney. And she believes that everybody deserves a chance at a free, fair trial and wants to give the best representation possible. This past February, she was selected as the 2021 Youth of the Year. And she'll serve the Boys and Girls Club as the teen ambassador. She'll lead committees of her fellow teens and continue to lead the way to make the community stronger. And then this past week, she represented St. Lucie County and completed the 2021 Florida Youth of the Year. She competed against 24 other teens, and I understand that they had an area of essay and resume writing and interview skills and public speaking, and she was named one of the sixth finalists in the state of Florida. So congratulations. Will, go ahead. Do you have anything?
Thank you, Wayne. I just want to tell you, first of all, that St. Lucie County schools are on the top of their game. So it's not just Boys and Girls Clubs. When you look at all of our youth across the county, they're doing some extraordinary things. And I personally believe that she did not win or take the number one spot because she was an 11th grader. I believe had she been a 12th grader, she would have won hands down. So I think she deserves another hand. And while I know that you guys are working so hard, I'm just going to ask you guys to continue working hard because our youth deserve it. And you guys have proven it every single day that we're giving them and we're giving them more, but not because of anything but the fact that they're our future and they're going to continue doing great things for us. So we are super proud of Elise and we're super proud of all these young people in the audience today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elise, would you like to say something? You've had a lot of practice, I know, so.
Yeah. I mean, I'd like to say that it was a hard battle that we fought, but I mean, this goes out to youth. I mean, I didn't really think I was going to get as far as I did, but if you just keep pushing, you can reach your goals.
Madam Chair, I could mention, not only, we had my alliance club today, she was our guest speaker this afternoon, and she did an excellent job, but not only did she, a top 25 finalist, she came in second in the state of Florida. So I'm very, very proud of her. You did a great job, Elise. Thank you.
I do have to also mention really quick that Dr. Perry is on our board, and I'll tell you what, he works for me very hard. And Jack Kelly was founder for the Boys and Girls Club, so thank you for having that vision years and years ago.
As long as we get paid a bill, yeah.
Ms. Martin?
Yes, Madam Chair, Board members, Superintendent Gent, at this time, I'd like to welcome Anne-Marie Mizuraki to the podium to read the Autism Awareness Month Resolution.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Superintendent Gent, Board members. As the program specialist for autism spectrum disorders for St. Lucie County Public Schools, it's an honor to read this resolution today. The School Board of St. Lucie County, resolution, proclaiming the month of April 2021 as Autism Awareness Month. Whereas autism spectrum disorder is a neurological difference that can affect anyone regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, or socioeconomic background. And whereas autism spectrum disorder affects 1 in 54 children in the United States and approximately 783 of students in St. Lucie County Public Schools as of 2021. And whereas males are four times more likely to have autism than females. Whereas autism spectrum disorder is estimated to be the fastest growing developmental disability in the United States by the Centers of Disease Control and Autism and Developmental Disabilities Monitoring. And whereas individuals with autism are individuals first and foremost with unique strengths and abilities. Whereas symptoms and characteristics of autism spectrum disorder present themselves in a variety of combinations and can result in lifelong impacts of an individual's ability to learn, develop relationships, and understand verbal and nonverbal communication. And whereas early diagnosis and intervention, as well as ongoing support from family, doctors, therapists, and educators, can positively impact people with autism spectrum disorder to achieve better outcomes and a higher quality of life. And whereas people with autism spectrum disorder should have access to appropriate services throughout their lifetime so that they may achieve their greatest potential and lead happy and productive lives, fully included within their communities. And whereas the School Board of St. Lucie County is dedicated to being pupil-centered, where its schools and communities are committed to developing programs and providing services that meet the diverse academic and social needs of all students, including those with autism. Now, therefore be it resolved that the School Board of St. Lucie County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the month of April as Autism Awareness Month and urges all personnel and students to participate in Autism Awareness Month activities to become better educated on the strengths and needs of those with autism spectrum disorders. Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent, do we have a recommendation to adopt the resolution?
I recommend we adopt the resolution as presented.
Thank you. Board members, do I have a motion?
So moved to accept the resolution for April as the National Autism Awareness Month.
Thank you. Dr. Mills and Mr. Kelly, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposition, motion carries unanimously.
Next, on our special recognition, we'd like to recognize our 2021 Lady Greyhound basketball team and Coach Wendell Adams. And as you can see, they are here, and we will have them come up for a photo in just a moment. Just a little bit of background about Coach Wendell Adams. He began his coaching career in 1985 as the boys' basketball coach. He was also a PE teacher in the district for 13 years. In 1999, Coach Adam became the head coach for the girls' varsity basketball team at Lincoln Park Academy. During his tenure as head coach, he created a program that is second to none, developing and mentoring young novice sixth graders into skilled players by the time they become high school seniors. Coach Adams has led the Lady Greyhounds to 16 district titles, one regional title, and most recently, the state runner-up in their class. He has been recognized as Coach of the Year by the Treasure Lakes Conference, Scripps, Treasure Coast Newspapers, and the Fort Pierce Tribune. He has 455 career wins. This past season, the team won 20 games with only two losses. Once again, they are seven-time district champions consecutive, regional championship, and made it to the Final Four, placing as the state runners-up. So congratulations to the Lady Greyhounds and Coach Wendell Adams.
Ms. Martin, before they come up for the picture, I just want to say a couple of things. When I was in high school back in the day, I was also on a, I was on a state championship basketball team out of Miami, and so I know how special it is. I still have the room key. Yes, I stole it. I kept it from where we stayed in Jacksonville. And one of the highlights of this year, and one of the most challenging years, one of the highlights for me, was I was there at your game when you played American Heritage. So was Mr. Ingersoll. And got to watch you guys defeat American Heritage. I believe the score was 48 to 37. And one young lady, Kristin McCain, where's Kristin? If she'll wave. Kristin, I believe, scored 34 points out of the 48. And she has a scholarship to Yale. That's right. She's going to Yale. And I wanted you to know, Kristin, that I've been, I used to coach as well, and I still coach and play even on a bad leg, and that for all my years in St. Lucie County, to watch your performance, even though it's a team game, to watch your performance was probably one of the top individual athletic performances that I've ever seen in 40 years here in St. Lucie County or anywhere. So congratulations to you and to the rest of the team. I know that Deborah Reese, where's Deborah? Deborah is also going to South Alabama, correct, on a full ride scholarship as well? And then, and there may be some other young ladies that are going, and Coach Adams, I don't think you ever beat me head to head, right, when we coached? No, I don't know. Congratulations to Coach as well. It's so hard to get to the Final Four, and you go a lifetime, many coaches just never make it. And for him to do that, I know it was a lifelong dream with the young ladies. I hope you, I know you had a good time. I know you enjoyed the time. You'll never forget it. I also bought a souvenir girl state championship, and on the back, it lists all of the teams in the state of Florida that participated, and right here is Lincoln Park Academy. So this is something that I'll always keep as well. So, Ms. Martin, back to you. Want them all to come on up for a picture?
Coach Adams, I know you'd like to say just a couple of words, and while he's coming to the podium, if we could have the players assemble up front, and we'll have the board members, when ready for a photo, just to stand at your seats, and we'll make sure we get everybody included. Coach Adams?
I really wasn't prepared, but I just want to, first of all, by saying thank you to Mr. Gent, School Board members, Assistant Superintendents, and to all the parents of these fine young ladies for trusting me with your girls for the last four or five years. I also want to thank our principal, Mrs. Santa Maria, for trusting in me to lead these group of fine young ladies as well. I want to thank our assistant principals, Ms. Stone, Ms. Octavi, and Mr. Sloan. And lastly, I'd like to thank our AD, Ms. Jill Willett, who's new to LPA, but she's not new to the district. Back in the day, like Mr. Gent said, we were bitter rivals when she was a coach at Sun Coast, and we're in the same district. But now we're on the same team, and thank you, Jill, for what all of you've done, and you was there for anything that I needed. And one last note to, another last note, I'd like to thank my assistant coaches, Coach Erickson, who's been with me for 17 years, Coach Moore, who's been with me for 15 years, and Brandon Montgomery, who's a newcomer to the district this year. I had the opportunity of coaching her back in 2013. Also, one sidebar, like Mr. Gent said, I don't know if you remember this, back in 1987, when I was assistant coach at Fort Pierce Central, you was the assistant principal, and we went to the state championship and won, and you accompanied us on that trip. And fast forward, what, 30-plus years later, you're the head man, I'm the head man at Lincoln Park. So those of us who are believers, this chapter was already written. So thank you.
Thank you, Coach.
Also, Mr. Gent, we would like to present you with a little small token.
Just in the interest of being completely transparent, the reason we were asked to stay back here and stand up is because there's no way we could be seen. You all are so nice and tall, so we just, we came up with that little ploy to make us look taller.
Thank you. And once again, congratulations to the Lady Greyhound's basketball team, Coach Adams. And if we could have all of those in the audience that supported the team, parents, administrators, please stand as well. We want to thank everybody involved.
Madam Chair.
I want to make a comment to, I believe, Ms. Crystal?
Okay.
That has the scholarship to Yale. My daughter received a scholarship as well to Yale, and today she's a federal judge right here in our county. In fact, she's the federal judge of the Treasure Coast. So I say that to say to all of you, I know Lincoln Park is number one, and you guys are really into your academics, and that's a good thing because it can take you a long way. And I ask that every last one of you come back to St. Lucie County and make your career from here because we need you.
Madam Chairman, too? Girls, I've sat there and watched you practice over the, not practice, condition over the summer. I did not say that. It was hot. You guys, you guys have conditioned all year round. You deserve it, and I'm so proud of you, just watching you guys walk in the gym, and you take care of your stuff, you take care of your equipment, you take care of your balls. But thank you for taking care of your coach. Make sure you thank all your coaches because they put a lot of time and effort into you, and they love you just as much as we do. Thank you again.
And thank you, Coach Adams. A special recognition, thank you for your hard work these many years, and we appreciate you as well.
Madam Chair, I just want to thank Mr. Gent and Troy for doing a great job. We got play-by-play. These guys were so proud of you. We got play-by-play, everything you were doing in the quarterfinal game. You did a great job. I thought that we lost you, and you were going to be going into the sports field, both of you guys. That's how, that's how proud we are of you guys. We are really proud. We watch everything you guys do.
Yeah, Mr. Gent was going to have a heart attack in the first two quarters.
We got it going. You guys warmed up. What was unique, too, was that they had the crowd, the crowd that was there, not only the folks, the parents, and the Lincoln Park community came out for the, for the girls and for the school, but the other teams that were there as well, they wanted to, they wanted to see you knock off American Heritage. You were the Cinderella story, so again, congratulations.
Congratulations. Next, our special recognition, we have three leaders from our very own district who have been appointed to Florida Department of Education Leadership Committees. First, we have Makita Broome. She is one of the assistant principals at Fort Pierce Westwood Academy. Is she in the audience? Don't see her. Makita was selected to serve on the School Educational Leadership Committee. She was nominated by FAU through the Elite Program, and she will be traveling to Tallahassee to review the leadership standards that are undergoing revision. So congratulations to Makita. Next, we have Felicia Nixon, the principal at Lawnwood Elementary. Felicia was nominated by Melissa Ramsey, the Vice Chancellor of Strategic Improvement. She will be serving on the ESSA Leadership Learning Committee. This is a committee that is in partnership with the Wallace Foundation, and she is joining a new statewide Florida Principal Learning Network this spring, and this is one, this is part of the Florida Every Student Succeeds Act Leadership Learning Community, so we know that she will represent us well. And finally, we have Denise Rodriguez. She is the Director of Talent Development, and she will be serving on a committee that will be reviewing the William Cecil Golden website. This is a website that is required for principal certification, and it is necessary that they do some updating, so they've pulled some experts together, and Denise will be serving on that committee. And I think Denise is here, so please stand and be recognized. Congratulations. And Ms. Nixon? All right, moving on to our Star Awards. Today, I'd like to recognize two teachers from Windmill Point, Lacey Black and Sean Carroll-Lannan. They were nominated by their principal, Bree Lamb. She wanted the teachers to be recognized for going above and beyond with the work that they do with Odyssey of the Mind. As you know, this is a tremendous amount of time outside of the regular school day, and they have two teams going to Worlds, and one student even received an Omer. So congratulations to Lacey and Sean. Next, we have Edwin Harper. He is a behavior tech at St. Lucie West Centennial High School, nominated by his principal, Andrea Popwell. She states that this year, Mr. Harper has given up his personal lunchtime every day to assist with courtyard supervision. It not only entails the traditional monitoring of students, but monitoring of the COVID-19 social distancing requirements. And he has done so voluntarily since the first day of school, never once being asked by school administration, just doing it because he wants to support the school and students in any way possible. So thank you, Edwin, and congratulations. Next, we have Tenilia Marshall. She is a bus driver, and she was nominated by Lauren Kozinski, one of the deans at Treasure Coast High School. She wanted to take a moment to make sure that we were all aware of how thankful they are for Tenilia every day at Treasure Coast. She not only transports her students, but also covers at a minimum of one to two extra runs daily. She knows that coverage is difficult and drivers are limited, but T., as she is known, does a tremendous job of ensuring all of her students arrive home in a timely manner. So thank you, Ms. Marshall. Next, we have Kristin Pelchat. She is an ESC self-contained teacher. Sorry. She is an ESC self-contained teacher at OCAMIC. She was nominated by one of her parents. She says that she should receive a Star Award because she has been working hard to provide in quality instruction to her child and others in the class. She likes the way she teaches and enjoys, it is evident that she enjoys what she does. She is very dedicated to the students, and all of the parents are so happy that she is a teacher at OCAMIC. So thank you for all that you do, Kristin. Finally, nominated by Principal Patty Galloway, Trevor Sporacio, he is a teacher at OCAMIC. As you know, April is Autism Awareness Month, and Ms. Galloway felt like it was a perfect time to nominate her civics teacher, Trevor. He has overcome many barriers through his own days as a student because he himself is autistic, and he has turned his own experiences into strategies to enhance his teaching. He understands what it means to struggle, to be different, to persevere and overcome. Trevor Sporacio is an outstanding civics teacher, and he never gives up on any students. He finds time in student schedules for remediation or extended learning by regularly holding learning lunches with his students. So thank you, Trevor, for all that you do. And congratulations to all of our April Star awardees. And that concludes our special orders for tonight.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may, just do one more thing. Vaughn, come on up here, please. This is Vaughn Peters. Now, unless something's happened, he's retiring at the end of the month, correct?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And Vaughn is a unique, unique gentleman. I've known him for many years. He is one of our IT, he's our sound guru in here. He also is a DJ on the side and does a lot of other things. Has a great personality. And so I guess this may be, this is your last board meeting, and so the pressure will be on your successor. But I just wanted to recognize him and to say thank you. How many years of service for us?
Now, I really have to tell my age, 35 years.
35 years. And, you know, when he goes to the schools, I mean, when you talk about pulls in the parking lot, they're just happy to see him because they know he's going to fix it and take care of it. I've never seen him angry, always got a smile on his face, and I just want to say thank you for your service to the district, and I just appreciate it. And if anybody's looking now that, hopefully, we get rid of this pandemic, we can have parties again, and there's your DJ right there. Thanks, Vaughn.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Vaughn, before you leave, I still have an issue with my laptop, okay? We will move on now to our EASL, ESOL report. Mr. Freeland, welcome to the podium. It's nice to see you tonight.
Good evening, Chairwoman Hawley, Board members, and Superintendent Gent. I have really three things I want to talk about this evening. None of them, none of them bad, just sort of general reminders and kind of where we are. But first, I want to say that, preface this by saying, I think through this whole pandemic, starting last March, the school district and the union together have done a really very, very good job dealing with what we faced. Never perfect, but in a situation like this, it's tough to be perfect every time. I do know, for instance, one of our neighbors just signed their return-to-school and COVID agreement less than a month ago, and we returned in August, and we managed to hammer that out. We've, we've tried to deal rapidly with any unforeseen things that have come up. So I think really, and it doesn't include just us, it includes everybody in the schools, the teachers, the support staff, but as a entity, as an organization, we've really, I believe, done a, done a very good job, perhaps the best job that we could do, and perhaps better than anybody else. We've really, we've really tackled this. So the things I'm going to talk about are somewhat related to that. I'm going to start by talking about masks and the mask requirement in our schools. And I know the county recently voted to lift the mask mandate in St. Lucie County. And, you know, I'm not going to speak to that particularly, but I do need to say that I believe it's too early to lift that mandate in our schools, and I know nobody's talked about that yet. I'm just trying to get ahead of this because I know people will. We've had members ask us about it, for example. I think it's simply too early. Masks add another layer of protection against COVID. We've certainly done a good job, and I need to thank the board and the district for making vaccines available to our members, for arranging times to get those. But not enough people have been vaccinated yet to give up our other protections that we have in place. We have several new mutations that are showing up, some more virulent, said that word better when I was practicing, more serious. We'll go with an easier word to say. But they are more serious, some of them are more transmissible, some of them are actually being caught by young people and having effects there. So even with our best efforts to vaccinate as many people as we can, we still need to do things like socially distance in our classrooms. We need to do things like continue the sanitation, the hand washing, all those things we're doing, and the other protections. But we also really, in my opinion, need to continue to require masks in our schools. We don't want to drop our guard too soon because we're feeling safer when we're really not. And I guess that's my way of saying that, at least at this time, the union wouldn't support lifting that mask mandate. So hopefully, when you get questions, as I'm sure you will, like I said, I already am, that's really where we stand as a union at this point with the mask. Which leads into, my next topic is, we don't want to drop the ball at this point in the year. I know we're almost at the end of the year. I know. I know that we are all exhausted. We are all frustrated. We are all stressed out by everything we faced during this year. But we still need to maintain the highest standards of COVID protections that we have to the best of our ability. And a phrase that's been coming up quite a bit lately is, "we're feasible." And I know that- And I know that that's what the standards say and the guidelines say, you know, to maintain socially distancing, "where feasible," and all those things, "where feasible." I just want to be sure that we don't get ourselves in our anxiousness to be done with the year, where we replace "where feasible" with "where it's easiest." I want to be sure we're still making the tough decisions and doing the hard, hard things we have to do to keep everybody safe. And the last thing I want to talk about, again, related to this, is while we're stressed, while our principals are stressed and our members are stressed, I get that, I really do, I'm stressed, you're stressed, I mean, I get it's been that kind of year. We need to do everything we can to keep all of our good educators in the county that we can. Just like a teacher can make or break a student, a principal in a school can make or break an educator, whether that's a teacher or a support person, support staff. And so what we, what we need to do as we move forward is treat everybody with, with respect and compassion. And I'm especially concerned about evaluations because a lot of times, they feel like gotchas, even though I don't believe that's anybody's intention. Just like we're trying to treat our students with compassion, we need to be sure that we treat our employees the same way, that, that what we're doing is because we do want you to stay here, right? If we're saying something that's not perfect in evaluation, it's because we want you to get better, it's not a gotcha. We have to be sure that we're letting people know that we really do want them to stay. And that's a concern because I'm getting calls and emails with people saying, "I really, I really just think," and it's not anything the district's done, some of it's what's going in Tallahassee, you know, some of it's outside of our control, but they're feeling like we're disposable or nobody cares about us. And I don't believe that's true of anybody here. But we have to be sure we're letting them know that we do care about you, we do want you to stay. And so as we move forward during this, this end-of-the-year time, it's just a general reminder that we need to treat everybody with compassion, respect, regardless of the situation, and not rush through evaluations because we've got piles of things to do. And I, and that's really all I have to say this evening, just some gentle reminders as we, as I know what happens this time of the year and the kind of calls that I get. And we really do need to keep our good people here. We don't want to move on to greener pastures and then realize that they were greener here to start with. And that's, that's all I have to say, and I want to thank you for your time, as always, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Freeland. We appreciate you being here. Anyone here from CWA to report tonight? I don't see anyone. So our two representatives for the St. Lucy Public Schools Youth Advisory Council, welcome to the podium. As always, it's good to see you here with us.
Thank you. Good evening, school board members, Chairperson Holly and Superintendent Gent. My name is Christian Baca.
And my name is Erica Morman.
We are here on behalf of the St. Lucy Public Schools Youth Advisory Council. We would like to inform the school board and the general public on the progression of our preparational proceedings for the St. Lucy Public Schools Youth Advisory Council. Throughout the month of April, the St. Lucy Public Schools Youth Advisory Council will be contacting administration and collaborating with public high school staff and to develop the list of council members for the 2021 to 2022 academic school year.
We hope to have our council members assembled by the end of this school year. Additionally, Christian and I have discussed the possibility of creating a virtual orientation so that incoming council members may understand the general procedures of the council, such as the implementation and navigation of Robert's rules. Nevertheless, on behalf of the student body, as we enter testing season, we are confident that our tireless efforts this school year will prove to be successful. Despite the adversity faced in the 2020, 2021 school year, students have constantly persist, or consistently persevered in their studies and deserve the immense recognition. As always, we look forward to the upcoming possibilities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to both of you as well. We now move to our consent agenda. Board members, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
No move to accept the agenda as accepted.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Superintendent, we'll receive your recommendation.
Recommend the board approve the consent agenda as submitted.
And before we move on, board members, are there any items that you wish to remove for separate discussion or separate vote? Hearing none. Mr. Superintendent?
Move to approve.
All in favor? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And right back to you, Mr. Superintendent, for staff and superintendent report.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Chair and the board. First item that we have up is, you'll see it on your screen, we were, the Promise is a Promise program that we have here, where that if students graduate, go into education, we have a job waiting for them when they come back, and this was a very, a positive news story that we got on WPTV, so if we can show that.
Welcome back. As high school seniors get closer to graduation, the job market after college lingers on their minds, especially in this current environment. But a program in St. Lucy Public Schools promises some students a job right back in their hometown. This morning, WPTV News Channel 5 Stephanie Soskine joining us with how the program helps their education come full circle.
Yeah, this is a very special program. A promise is a promise. It may sound like a simple phrase, but it comes with a job and a future for some St. Lucy County students who want to become teachers.
We're still kind of touching on our seventh president, which is who? Who's the seventh? Andrew Jackson. Who's the first?
First-year teacher Jewel Edwards talks history with her Creative Arts Academy of St. Lucy students.
I'm happy here. My kids are amazing. It's just a really good spot to be in.
A good spot now.
So we're all doing the compromise of 1850 today, ready to go to Canvas?
But things were a bit uncertain when Jewel graduated college last May.
I think in March, we were sent home from college because of the pandemic, so it was a little bit more difficult. We didn't have a lot of interviews available in Tallahassee. So my only option was, hey, I got to come home and figure out something, and Promises a Promise was like wide open, and had the opportunity that I needed.
The Promise is a Promise program guarantees participating St. Lucy County students a teaching job in the district after graduation.
I just graduated.
Something Jewel says she's grateful for, especially during the pandemic.
Beyond measure, it's such a good opportunity to come back, and it's not just a, a job that they offered me, it was a career. It was something that I could grow in and develop in.
All St. Lucy County high schools have these signs up around the building telling students about the Promise is a Promise program. Once a student tells their school counselor they plan to major in education, the counselor then can get them a certificate at graduation. Their information goes into a database, and the school district can keep track of those students while they're in college and make sure they get that job when they get out.
I think I've always kind of known that I wanted to go into education. My mom and my grandma was also a teacher, and so I would hang out in their classrooms.
For Grace Robinson, a senior at Fort Pierce Central High School, it was an easy decision to sign up for the promise.
I think it's a really great opportunity, honestly, for St. Lucy kids because the world is so uncertain, and so having that certainty that I will have a job doing something I love, which is educating others, really just kind of relieves that anxiety of not knowing what's going to happen after college. Help my community.
Fellow senior Brienne Yates agrees and hopes to become a music teacher.
I think it's wonderful because the uncertainty that everyone's feeling right now, especially with maintaining a job and being able to like stay in their community and help others, I think it's really, really good that we're able to have a guaranteed job whenever we are out of college.
Jewel was just named Outstanding First-Year Teacher of the Year for St. Lucy County. She encourages students to consider the program and says it's a promise she plans to keep.
I'm grateful to be in a district where I grew up in, and now I'm teaching, and now I'm working, it's just, it's awesome.
And the Promise is a Promise program actually started 15 years ago in St. Lucy Public Schools. There are 40 students enrolled for this year's graduating class, and school leaders hope to increase that number as they get closer to the end of the school year and students start to solidify their post-high school plans.
So anyway, that was on, I think, about two weeks ago on Channel WPTV. Great, great recognition for the, for all, all of those that were on the screen are First-Year Teacher of the Year as well, and then two students that are going into it. And we've done a real strong push this year with our high school counselors and put up signs and brochures in the schools to do that, to get our children, our students, they're not children, our seniors to come back to us in four years. The next thing that we have, this is kind of interesting. This is Treasure Coast High School teacher, Robert Kemp, and he submitted his recipe, recipe for a hamburger and was chosen one of the three finalists in the, in the Dwyane Wade Challenge. So Dwyane Wade is quite the celebrity nowadays, and for one of our teachers to be able to get his burger in there, I guess we're going to have to go over and get seven of them. How many we got up here? Is it eight of us? Get some burgers made for us here at the next meeting. But anyway, we wanted to share that and congratulate Robert Kemp on that one. The next one at your, at your, at the dice here in front of you, you should have the kindergarten roundup, and this is going to begin next week on Wednesday. From 11:00 to 7:00, we'll be at Sam Gaines on the next day. The 22nd will be at Centennial, and then at the 23rd at Southport from 11:00 to 7:00 PM. And this is where we're doing a major, major push to get parents to register their children early for kindergarten. We know that we may have had some students that may have sat out this past year, we're not sure where they were across the state, and including right here in St. Lucy County. So we're doing a major push within our communities, our school centers are reaching out to siblings and to, to get these students registered early. We don't want parents to wait till school starts or the week before school. The week before school, we're going to have at least one of those days at each individual school, the kindergarteners will be able to come in and, and meet their teachers and I believe it may be half-day program, and just become acclimated to what's happening in school and what the first day will actually look like. Secondly, you should have another brochure there that talks about our Learning Adventure Camp, and that'll be the three-week sessions. We've shared that with the board, but I wanted you to have a copy of that flyer as well. And then we're in the open enrollment period right now for students that are enrolling in our schools or interested in, in unique programs within our school centers. Mr. Freeland mentioned the use of masks, and I do know that the county lifted the order for, for St. Lucy County, but my position is, and it made it really clear, and we did a news release as well, that we're going to continue to mask up until the end of the school year. We have approximately 30 school days left. That's Monday through Friday. I don't believe there's any more holidays except Memorial Day, and when Memorial Day hits here, it's, there's two days left after that. So we're going to continue to stay masked in our schools. I believe it's worked for us. We follow the science, we really closely monitor the CDC guidelines, and I don't believe Mr. Freeland's still here right now, but that's the position that we'll take. And then when we talk about next year, I sent an email to the board last night, I mentioned this yesterday. Yesterday, I had an opportunity to go to the, speak at the Fort Pierce City Commission on our graduation rate, and Dr. Prince made that same presentation to the county commissioners last week, and Mrs. Holly was at both of those presentations. And one of the questions that the, and the commissioners asked me was, "What will next school year look like?" Well, I'm not sure what the year will look like yet, but I am, I do believe strongly that we need to go back to our traditional school centers, that we do away with the My School virtual option. Right now, we have 72% of our students back in school. Most counties across the state are moving in this direction, I believe. Broward County just announced it yesterday, Palm Beach County's announced it, I know some, several counties across the state are going to do that. Parents will still have a choice, but it will not be the My School virtual choice. The virtual program that we have here and we've had since 2009 is Mosaic, the Mosaic program. And so on our webpage, we'll have that highlighted and what that would be like. So if a parent still is not comfortable, there still is a virtual option, option available through the Mosaic virtual program that we have, and it's an excellent program, and it's, it's hard, it's very rigorous, it's a tough program. And virtual learning is for some students, that's their niche, but the majority of our students really need to be in front of a teacher, and they need to get that one-on-one learning with that teacher in front of them in the classroom. We'll be talking more about the safety protocols as we get closer to next fall, depending upon where, you know, what happens over the next few months, you know, but we will continue to do that, that will be first and foremost, but that we need to get our students back in, in front of their teacher. It helps us also in the area of actually being able to eyeball them, social, emotional, to see where they stand academically. When we, we're in the middle of our testing right now, we do know that some students are going to have some setbacks this year. This is one of the main reasons for that. Thus, the, the summer school program and reaching out to many students that, that needed additional support, and we just think that this is the next step to take, to, to get back, quote, whatever normal will look like, but that our students are back in our school centers with no more, the, not having the My School virtual option, but having the, the only virtual option will be the Mosaic virtual option. And on our webpage, we'll list what that's all about and be happy to answer questions for, from community members and particularly parents and students as they begin to look forward. We will be sending information out to our, to our parents and a press release pretty quickly after this. And I think that, I also sent the board the, this week, this morning, maybe it was late morning, the, a summary of the commissioner's executive order, and we're very pleased with that executive order. The executive order really gives the school district flexibility over our individual students. So when we're looking at graduations, we can make a determination based on the criteria of, of individual students. When we look at promotions to different grade levels, we really can make that determination, talking to the principals, talking to the teachers, talking to the parents. There's a lot to it, I just gave you the summary of that. But I do want to commend the Commissioner of Education, Krista Corcoran, because this year, more so than any year in the past, they have really listened to us. They've listened to the School Boards Association, they've listened to the Superintendents Association, and it could have been a lot worse. The accountability, we want the test, we want our students in the test so that will tell us where we are right now. It's like a physical exam. What did our students do this year? Who's progressing? What specific strategies do we need for them next year? And so we'll, we'll have that information, but there's not going to be any punitive damages to individual schools and to individual students. It's really a local, a local decision that we will control here with the school district. And so I, I do want to, you know, thank, thank the commissioner and the governor as well for, for allowing us to, to do that and to listening to, to listening to those closest to education and doing what I believe is in the best interest of our students. And so we'll continue to do our testing, we're in that season right now, it's going very, very smoothly. We'll get our data back sometime, probably near the end of July, which is a short window, but we've done so many assessments ourself this year that we will have a really good idea of where our students are, where they are performing, whether they're at the My School virtual, or whether they're in the traditional right now, to set them up for success this summer, and then to make sure that that's continued for next school year. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. While we're still operating under the emergency order, let me read this motion into the minutes. There is a motion confirming, approving, and ratifying all of the superintendent's actions taking during the COVID-19 public health emergency for the period covered by his report, and authorizing the superintendent's continuation of such actions for so long as the governor's emergency declaration remains in effect. Do I have a motion to approve?
No move to approve.
Thank you, Dr. Mills, a second. Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. We will now move Mr. Harold to a report from our attorney.
No item, thank you.
Thank you. And our school board member reports. And Mr. Kelly, we'll begin with you this evening.
All I really had this week was TPO meeting, that's the transportation program for the county, and we did talk about, the only thing put into our board is we did talk about redoing some of the crosswalks, they're in pretty bad shape. Can you hear me okay? Yeah, we, the crosswalks, especially I brought up by the schools, some of them, especially up in North County, the crosswalks are pretty bad. And also, they put me on the, TCTC was, I guess, for the whole Ford County area, I got to go to Vero Beach for that one, so I don't think I, but yeah, you're laughing, you can want ride with me, Wayne. I just want to say, though, I really appreciate the Promise is a Promise piece. I won't, I won't get into it, but that's, that's the kind of thing. That was a great piece. And I, I know we can't make all of those stations put us in, you know, up in front all the time like that. That piece was done well, that was good stuff, that's all.
Dr. Mills?
Good evening, board, and everyone that's out there, and those that are as well listening to us through our media channel. Just want to make an announcement of our Speaker Bureau's guests axing the public to please go on and enjoy the stories that people give during that program, very inspiring stories. This month, we have Jennifer Richardson, who is on, one of our new school board members. She is on for the entire month, and she is giving her, her life story. And so if you want to know Ms. Jennifer Richardson... And so if you want to know Ms. Jennifer Richardson a little better, that would be a great way to learn of who she is and how she was raised and et cetera. We also have Joel Bagello. He's the new owner of the Better Living and Marketplace magazine. He's also the owner of a business called TCO Studios right here in St. Lucy County, and he will be on for the month of May. And then we have Ms. Elise Ingram-Davison, which I think that might be her over there in the corner. I'm not sure with the mask and all the way over there. Yes, it is. She will, she is the CEO and the founder of Parents for Progressive Education. She will be on for the entire month of June. And then for July, we have our own school board member, Debbie Harley. And so we have some great stories for you guys and for the, our TV audience. You can get it on YouTube as well as our media channel. So I just wanted to make that announcement so that we were, you all aware, our teachers and our different employees in the district, please go on and listen to their stories. We also have been in a war this year for 2021, not just us, but this entire country and beyond, the nation. And we've been in a war against a virus. And each county, I believe that each district has to look out for our people that live within our county. And overall, we have done a pretty darn good job, especially here as a school district. And I am quite impressed with what the work that has been done. And I myself know personally the work because I'm one of those parents, grandparents, who with the My School, work with my grandkids every week in that school. And I have seen firsthand the teachers and the work that has gone into the My School students. And, you know, as Superintendent Gent said, I follow the science. We follow the science. And so we will continue. We know that there is a lot of data out there now of mental illness problems as a result of students not being in school. And we also know that there is data regarding people still getting this COVID. So we're going to be working as a school district like we've done all year long in making sure that our people are safe to, to the best of our ability, and I think we've done pretty well this year, so I just wanted to bring that up. And also, Ms., Dr. Wiles, I am hoping that we are working on summer packets for those after-school programs because I have one myself, and I would like to make sure that every grade level, we are working with the school district to ensure the success of our students over the summer. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Mr. Ingersoll?
Yes, ma'am. First, I'd like to thank Bill Tomlinson for bringing to our attention, April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month by wearing our blue masks. Thank you, Bill, for getting this and bringing it to our attention. I also want to bring to our attention, softball fields off Quincy Avenue are gonna be dedicated to Laine Chesney. I know you guys know the story, but just to bring it up, it'll be April 22nd, Lincoln Park will play that day, it's senior day, and she would've graduated. And lastly, food for thought, superintendent talking about going to play the state championships and keeping his room key, and all the, all the young kids in the room were like, oh, no big deal. Do you realize those room keys were metal back in those days and it took a locksmith to cut it up?
They don't know what a room key is.
They don't know what a room key is. That's what I was thinking. When you said room key, I said them jokers don't know what you're talking about.
It was a real key.
That's why it was easy to hang on to, wasn't it? Didn't disintegrate or anything. Ms. Richardson?
I think I'm on, so I just wanted to say good evening and welcome. And I have had such a, I think today's meeting has been just awesome. It's been laid back, you know, it's just, it's a really, really very nice atmosphere. So thank you, thank you, everybody. We went to the Young Floridian program that they had, and to all our nominees and all winners, I just say thank you. I mean, awesome. 4.8 GPA, I mean, those are things that I just dreamt about when I was in college or school. So, I mean, magnificent, you know, and to all our winners. I, again, when it comes to education, that's what we are here for, and so I'm probably going to bring the mood down a little bit right now. When I, I spoke, and I'm going to still speak about our, our community when it comes to our African-American students, and I think that that's something that we really need to seriously concentrate, and we are going to. We have a meeting set up that we're going to discuss this because the only, you know, you turn on the TV, you turn on the radio, and this is what we are being, that's what's in front of our eyes, in front of our ears. So obviously, there is a problem. If there is a problem, we need to find a solution. The only way that we can change stuff is the trends, we are transformed by the renewing of our minds, so we have to change the way we think. And why are we in this business to train up our children and to change maybe some of the way they are thinking? So I'm, I am rare, I think that that's probably one of the components that we need right now as, along with the social, emotional learning, along with everything else, but I think this is an important part of what we need in order to change where we're going, to change or the trajectory of our students' life. And in doing that, we're going to change our community. We want to see better, and it starts in the mind. It starts by how we're teaching. So I'm just saying that we're going to be having at our next workshop, which is on the 27th, we're going to be talking some, a little bit or some about the African-American history. So for everybody who's asked me when I was campaigning about African-American history, they want it to be taught in school, then you need to be here. You need to be here for this, okay? Don't leave me here alone. Be here for this, so you can hear for yourself. You'll hear from the, 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 the educators, you know what we're doing, and then you can form your own opinions. You'll be hearing it from me. You'll be here for yourself. So to our parents out there who are watching this program, please be here March, April...
One month, are we in?
April. April the 27th, and it's a nine o'clock workshop, and, and it's, it's just the beginning. It's the beginning of the rest of our kids' future as far as I'm concerned. I'm going to be very adamant, I'm, I'm very intentional about making sure that this happens and there is some accountability and, and, you know, just for some open and transparent conversations here. So with that, I will say, thank you so very much for listening.
Okay. I think we are at the end of our meeting. It was really, really great to see so many youth students here with us tonight, representing so many different facets of their educational backgrounds. It feels right when we have students with us to celebrate, so. Thank you all for being here. Blessings upon you as we continue in this testing season. It's, as Mr. Gent said, what, 30 school days left? So that makes it seem almost palatable at this point, so. Hope you all have a great evening. Ms. Harrison, do we have any unscheduled speakers to come for us? All right. Hearing none and no other business to come before us, we are adjourned.